Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the August 7, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of August 7, 2023.
Second.
Any comments or changes, call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
I.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
I abstain as I was not here.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Accounts payable.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from August 8, 2023 through August 21, 2023, any amount of $5,123,896.41.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
And it's a bit of a long one, but for those who don't know, probably about half of these items were actually discussed at the COW here at 6 o'clock. So, Item A, payroll for August 4, 2023. Item B, Highland Avenue and Cairo Vista Stormwater Improvements, RFP 23-48. Item C, master service agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Census Gatto USA Inc. for red light cameras. Item D, a resolution approving a policy regarding liens. Item E, elimination of police administrative booking fee ordinance. Item F, accounts receivable write-off debt relating to MWRD extraterritorial agreement ordinance. Item G, accounts receivable write-off debt relating to general accounts receivables ordinance. Item H, priority of utility bill payments ordinance. Item I, budget amendment number three. Item J, an ordinance amending appendices A and B to ordinance number five, 774, Third Amendment. Item K, Azer AD Service Instance Move and O365 deployment. Item L, A&E Services Police Department mezzanine structural analysis. Item M, Skyhawks contractual agreement. Item N, amendment to change Glock Pistol 17 purchase to Glock 45 for police department purchase. TLR-1HL tactical LED light purchase, holster L3D or right-hand Glock 45-TL purchase. Item O, Orland Park Police Supervisors Association Agreement. Item P, amend Title VII, Chapter 18, increased number of video gaming license ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve Items A through P of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll. Could just, the liens items we were going to put on in a future meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve Items A through E.
Nope.
That's it. Items A through E and Items H through M.
So moved.
Excuse me, H through P of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve Items A through C.
Okay.
And then I through P of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
And then I will entertain a motion to table Items, excuse me, postpone Items.
D.
D.
D through H.
So moved.
Second.
Until the next board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Compass.
I move to postpone Items D through H until the next meeting.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Did we get all that right?
Yeah, the only other thing is, we had a motion that was moved and seconded to approve the entire consent agenda, so that should, that motion should be rescinded. I believe Mike Malani made it.
Yes.
I can do a rescind a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I rescind my motion.
To, your motion to approve A through P?
A through P, yes.
And we seconded it.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
And for all the confusion, basically, the five things that were just, five of the things that were just discussed at the Committee of the Hole are being delayed till next week if there's a cleanup item on one of those.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Amending Title V, Chapter V, a fire code of the Village of Orland Park as amended.
Second.
And if I'm understanding correctly, these are all the changes that, these encompass all the changes that we've discussed for about the last three months, is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Any other comments? I know we've discussed this ad nauseam. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Spirit of America Car Show Special Event Permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve permitting Orland Park Crossing to LLC to produce and host the Spirit of America Car Show on the grounds of Orland Crossing on September 9, 2023, contingent on meeting all of the villages permitting requirements, payment of fees, and inspections.
Second. Any comments, call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2024 Winter and Spring Program Lists.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve the Recreation and Parks Department Winter/Spring 2024 Recreation Program and Event Offerings and authorize payment to each contractual vendor and/or instructor at the time of invoicing based upon the actual participation of each session and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. And Ray, could you give us the highlights, the changes, I think are the big thing?
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure. Thanks for this opportunity. So each, just a quick summary, so each program guide, and we do three per year, we bring that to board for the boards that review and approval. The programs do vary by season, so, you know, you have the indoor/outdoor camps and all the different programs that we offer. When we evaluate programs and we evaluate them on an annual basis per season, we look at the costs, we look at the revenues earned, and we look at the participation. Now, the programs that we offer, they all, we only offer those programs if in fact there's enough participants to run the program, otherwise we wouldn't run that program. We do offer programs on occasion that are marginal on that fee structure, hoping that we can gain some additional interest, we'll give that a couple tries, sometimes we'll still have to cancel it, or we'll gain some participants and we'll run it. Those programs that don't run well, don't have good registration, then of course we cancel those. And then every year, and we'll highlight some of these in this presentation, we do introduce new programs and events, so. Some of the things that we're discontinuing next year, one of them, sorry, Trustee Malani, is a crude event, so it is a very fun event, was very successful, we offered it for two years, but it is a little bit upside down on the expenses, and probably the hard part is very staff-heavy, so last year it took us 23 staff. We served 300 people, they had a great time, but it is very staff-intensive, so we're proposing to discontinue that. The Owls Track and Field Softball Bus Service and the Time to Spare Bus Service, so we're going to be getting rid of those services. The participants in Time to Spare Bowling will still participate in that program, they'll just obtain their own transportation to do that. And then you can see some of the other programs that we've run that haven't been popular and haven't been successful. Additional programs that we're looking at canceling in the spring, in winter session, you can see them there, so all programs that we hoped would be successful, but were not. And then new programs, so a lot of new programs, staff is very creative, very energetic, everyone who knows us in recreation knows, we love what we do, so we're always excited to introduce some new things. So this represents us in fitness, in recreation programs, in cultural arts, so all our different programs, you can see there, that's just one page of it, now we have a couple of, a couple of other pages. So more programs, so you can see special recs, our special rec staff is very excited to introduce some new programs. Adaptive sports have been something they've been trying to do for a long time, so we're going to introduce that this year along with other programs. We've been actually trying to introduce ice skating lessons at the ice rink, we have a great ice rink, we have Arctic Ice who was honored, or commemorated here, honored here a couple weeks ago, so we'll try to work with them to do some private lessons at the ice rink, and curling. Everybody loves curling, it's a great sport at the Olympics, anybody of any size can win in curling as we saw in some of the recent Olympics, so we think that'll be a nice novelty out there, we're going to try to introduce that at the ice rink.
So that stands for special rec bill, not senior?
Thanks for the clarification. And then our Heritage Sites Division, so new division recently approved, you can see some of the programs that will be taking place there this coming winter and spring.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I have a comment, I just want to compliment you, Ray, for really taking a look at your programs and analyzing it and seeing what's successful and what isn't, and, you know, just kind of retiring the ones that just aren't successful and implementing new programs. So kudos to you and your team for coming up with some fresh ideas, so I like it, good job.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Eagle Ridge One Temporary Athletic Lights.
Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve allowing Chicago City Soccer to utilize temporary light towers August 14, 2023 to October 30, 2023, Mondays through Thursdays between the hours of 4 and 8 p.m.
Second.
Any comments? I like that we polled the residents and, you know, 90% of them said, you go ahead with it. The other thing is, we do have that new survey tool, and I know we're still working on the community survey, but I think we can start using that survey tool because we've already purchased that, so we can start using it for these things for rec right now, even if the strategic plan survey is not done, so we should, you know, make sure we're doing that.
We just completed our initial training today, so we're going to try to roll it out as soon as possible.
Because I know we can geofence these things and we can really get input from that, so I think that's a great way to go, and cuts down on the postcards and all that, can probably get a better return as well. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Harris Enterprise and Tyler Cashier integration next steps.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Move to approve Quote Number 4059 from Harris ERP for the Community Development and Utility Billing CIS Development Plan Discovery and Professional Services Interface to Tyler Cashier and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors.
Reminder to the speakers, you have three minutes, so, and you need to come to the lectern, and please give us your name and address, if you would, for the record, so start with, it's like, I can't read it, Deana Joseph?
Hi, I'm Deana Joseph, 1516. I just had-
Can you pull down the mic just a little bit?
Sure, is that better?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah?
Don't turn it off. My clerk is turning it off, I think. Why is it flashing? There we go, it's working now. Okay, we're all good.
I just had some questions, I didn't know where else to go because I couldn't see anything in the mail, or I didn't know where to look, so maybe you can help me. Because I'm, I'm getting close to being retired, and I'm watching my bills, and I know one of the things that the, they were talking about was building a new police training academy and gun range, I think if I understood that right. And I guess if our guys are so, if our men and women are so wonderful, I mean, they're only one of 20 in the state that have been accredited, as they have, what's wrong with what we have already? Why do we have to spend that kind of money and add that kind of burden to my taxes if they're doing such a great job already with what they have? I mean, there's a difference, you know, we run a household, there's always a difference of wants versus needs. Is it something they actually need? And if so, I guess where do I find that information? How do we determine that it's needed rather than something that's just wanted and maybe not really necessary?
So we allow you to comment, and then, we normally don't comment back, but I will have some comments, but you just finish your comments first and then-
Well, that was, that was about it.
Okay, so what I would suggest is, so thank you for your comments and your questions, what I would suggest is to go to the, go to the Committee of the Hole meeting that we just had.
At 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock, it's online, you can go to the video, I gave, what, 20 minutes on the whole process we've gone through for all of our capital needs, so not just, not just the police training facility, but all of them. But obviously, our police do a phenomenal job, but our police range is unsafe. Do we have a picture of the police range anywhere, the current one, that you could pull up?
We the only ones, are we the only ones that use it? It's not a joint venture?
So, our current facility is unsafe for live fire. It was probably unsafe for live fire for a long time, to be honest, but once we put restaurants nearby it, we can't, and you have bullets bouncing off of, it's an outdoor range, bullets bouncing off of our Public Works Department and all that, probably, you know, it was probably okay for 30 years ago, not okay today. I think that's fair to say, chief? Yeah. And so, so now, what we've been doing is, we've been doing, we've been doing non-firing training there, but it's still, it's basically a hill with lean-tos, is what it is. That's our current facility.
And that's where they've been training all these years?
That's where they've been training, doing a lot of our training all these years, but it's unsafe for shooting any kind of live fire whatsoever.
So there isn't like a general one where all of Cook County can go?
No, there's other training facilities that we go to and our, you know, that the academy and all, this is not the academy, this is ongoing training. So we have an indoor simulator, which is in a little room that we use as well, so this is what we have right now, and literally that's what it looks like, it's basically like a pole barn-ish thing and with a hill by our Public Works, and it's just not safe for live fire. With the, with the training requirements that are being required, plus the fact that we have to shoot, and we have to go to private ranges right now to shoot and qualify, it's very challenging, and in order to stay a state-of-the-art department, we have to continue to train properly, and so it was determined that, in building this facility, otherwise we don't have a place to train, and we're going to start to see a fall off in our quality of police officers because of, and because we just don't have a training facility. And so if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, and so we're building not only the training facility, but we're going to move our emergency operating center, the emergency operating center, by the way, was probably built in 1990 that we have over there, and so while it kind of works, it's, it's old, it's dated, and so, and part of that money comes from our 911 money as well, so there is funding for it, and it basically allows for a whole training facility simulator, as you can, you can go back to the, the, so that's the new training facility, so it's got training facilities, it's got classrooms, it's got a range, an indoor range where we can shoot, and we can also, so we can, we can practice, so some of the other things is, we need SWAT training and that, right now we go to a place, but there is the potential in the future we'll have, for a lot of complicated reasons, we could have some of our own units just because of the quality that we, we get for that. So, so we can pull everything indoors and we can do, you know, work with vehicles, we can do all kinds of things in this facility. Now, the goal here is, is that we would allow other places to come use it and rent it and pay for it as well, and pay for use of that, because there really isn't a place nearby to really do this type of training that we really should have, so.
Are we looking to get other monies to help build it from other communities or that?
So again, we allow the comments, but yes, I'll grant a little bit of latitude, the, we, we have 911 money, we will look for outside funding as well, but again, there is an entire presentation that I have given, I don't know what, half a dozen times, State of the Village and other times, but in, at-
And they're at these committees, all the different committee meetings, how, how many should I go back?
So you can get this online at State of the Village, you can get it online, just tonight at the Committee of the Hole, I walked through all of our infrastructure, all of our capital, five-year capital plan, our funding for the five-year capital plan, all the things that we're doing, our financial situation, all of that, I ran through tonight, so if you go to the, if you go online to the Village YouTube site, you can basically click on that and you can watch the whole thing, I'm not going to go through 25 minutes, or 20 or 25 minutes that I just did, but you can see the whole thing, and the whole process that we've gone through, and it dates back to when I first got here in 2017.
2017.
All that's there. So thank you very much for your comments.
All right, thanks for your answers.
You're welcome. Diana Howard?
I, I'm just disgusted with this whole thing I've been hearing about the Legion. The building, the village wanting to take it, I'm really sick of the robocalls, I don't care which side they're coming from, I am sick of the robocalls, I am sick of this. I am sick of the games that are being played up here by all of you, specifically what I'm really sick of. Please tell them about the expletive tirades you let out on the veterans about a month ago, after you came to the meeting and were denied to speak because you did not fill out an agenda. I would really love that read into the record about how you told them that we didn't know who we were fucking with. And if you want to deny, there's a whole Legion that was there that night.
You have two minutes.
Oh, I can continue. Would you like me to keep going?
You have another minute and 45 seconds.
About a few other things that were said? How now we weren't going to get a damn thing? Nothing to say, huh? I just want the record to show what's actually being done and said when all these people aren't sitting here, behind the curtain, to the veterans, and I'm sure probably other people that are sitting up there at the time. It wasn't just me at that meeting, there was a whole bunch of veterans sitting there. You can pull any one of them in here and ask them what happened during that meeting and afterwards. Way to go.
Well, I thank you for your comments, but, and I will respond, because I really don't like when people come here and read false things of the record. Nabea Zigar was there, Joel Van Essen was there, and I think they would both stand on the record today and say none of that happened, as would the veterans. How many members of the Legion are in this room right now? I'm a member of the Legion.
Yes.
So please sit down, you had your opportunity to speak. I'm also a member of the Veterans, I'm also a member of the VFW, I'm a lifetime member of both, and I spoke there. You mentioned you're tired of the robocalls. We're not making the robocalls, it's people making lies up, just like what was said right here. There was no expletives said, there was no nothing, in fact, when the meeting was over, I went out and spoke with Joel and with Nabea, and I think you both would agree that we spoke about it, correct? And then I went back in and had pizza, which I don't remember you being there, with the members of the Legion. So, like we do after every meeting that I go to, so we always have that, so that is the case. The Veterans Center, as I was very clear, you can pull it up here, and by the way, the VFW and the Legion have both known about this since 2018. Anyone that tells you otherwise is not telling you the truth. They've known, because we've known since 2018, that that building was ending its useful life. The village, as I said that night, the night that I was not allowed to speak, by the way, I've been allowed to speak at every other Legion meeting ever. One member decided, two members decided they weren't going to let me speak, fine, I didn't speak. The next meeting, they allowed me to speak. The next meeting, which you weren't at, we also had an entire meeting for 50, with 50 people there approximately, explaining exactly what's happening at this event, but I don't recall seeing you there to ask any of these questions, where we walk through all this. I will take the time to walk through it now. So, you got to shrink it down. So the current building is unusable, is going to be unusable, it's ending its useful life, it's about $400,000 over the next five years. This building that we're going to move the veterans to actually has a larger meeting space, which the goals of the, of the VFW and the Legion, I know because I'm a member that attends meetings there regularly, the goal of both of those organizations, okay, is to hold, have a place for meetings and a place for other gatherings, okay? Well, this actually has a bigger meeting space than the current space, oh, the other thing is, they need storage. This actually triples the amount of storage they currently have, creates meeting space and provides a safe, a safer place to lock their guns and weapons than what they currently have, and provides more parking, as well as has a deck for picnics and all of that stuff which we don't have, and it's going into a building that is, got a 20-year useful life that's expected. Now, to be clear, no other municipality gives veterans or veterans groups a space. Staff recommended to me that we give them a meeting space, and that was it, correct, George? And, and what was my response? My response is, that's not good enough, we've just, we've made it clear that we're going to provide this to the veterans, it's important for the Orland Park residents to provide this for the veterans, so we said, hey, let's come up with a better solution. Within five minutes, Joel said, I think I have a solution, let's look at this other[1644.15] Within five minutes, Joel said, I think I have a solution, let's look at this other location. Joel, how many meetings have you had with the, the veterans groups about how to configure this?
About four or five.
About four or five meetings on how to configure this. So, they are well aware that this was happening. So, the veterans groups have been well aware and we've actually configured it to meet their needs, and they're moving about what, four blocks down the street? Better parking, better deck, better meeting space, newer building, um, yeah, people, as I mentioned at the meeting, um, where we had this, people don't like change. That's just a fact. But I can tell you that when I was in the military, my first four years, all of the units that I was in, they all closed by the time I was out in nine years, because change happens. I know Joel's been a part of many decommissionings with the Navy where they closed buildings, it just happens, buildings end their useful life, people who have been in the military understand this, and we have said, we're going to move everything from, from the VFW Hall to, um, this new building, anything that doesn't fit or they don't want in there anymore, we're going to put with our museum artifacts so that the stuff gets preserved. So, all of this is going to happen. There was none of what was said here tonight, there were no expletives, there was no yelling at anybody, there was none of that, that was, there was none of that, what was that?
Video.
Yeah, I know, the video, the video shows that, well, she's talked about the meeting before, but you were both at that meeting.
I heard the video.
You, you were, you were both there. Well, again, so I'm not going to bother talking about the robocalls because you're angry about the robocalls, which is being made by people that are, are working with, working with and supporting you, so, I mean, we're not doing, obviously not doing robocalls to attack, we're not doing robocalls to attack our families like we've been under, all of us have been under, letters attacking our families, letters attacking our bus, attacking us at our businesses, letters attacking our spouses, letters going to donors attacking our spouses and families. My son and daughter-in-law put in a lawsuit, it's absurd, it's absolutely absurd, and to come up here and make accusations of something that never happened, you have video, go show it. That's what I say, because it never happened, and I know I've got people sitting here in the room that were there, so feel more, more than, more than free to send, to put all those videos that you say you have, because you know what? If you had them, they'd already be up there. I've, I've just had it with all of the garbage that people, that people make up and come up here and say in a public forum, well, you're on record, you're on record, you're on record with the defamation that you just made. So, and, and that's enough said with all that we've had to deal with on this board floor. It's, it's absolutely disgusting.
I was just wondering if, uh, if, if Orland Park is going to be responsible for any of these illegal immigrants that are coming across the border, the open border now. Uh, I'm under the impression, I've heard on the news, on internet, that, uh, Chicago is trying to push these people that they have, I believe it's somewhere like 30,000 or something, that out into the suburbs, and I was just wondering if we were going to be accepting these people, accepting the responsibility, the...
Is that all your comments and questions? Thank you for your comments. Um, so, like I said, I normally don't respond to these things, but because of the nature of the questions, I'll just go ahead and respond to this too, so, um, so I've been very clear, uh, I think there was an article out this week, um, and it falls on the heel, you can take a seat. Brandon Johnson saying that he's going to put these all out in the suburbs, let me be clear. Governor Pritzker and the state of Illinois and Brandon Johnson and the, the council of the city of Chicago have declared sanctuary states and sanctuary city, which is in violation of our, our laws, and I say Brandon Johnson because he also did the same thing, he voted for it when he was on the Cook County Board, so they have voted to violate our federal immigration laws, which is wrong. Then they're going to compound that by trying to take people from, to say that pe, that migrants that are put, that are sent here after they've said they're a sanctuary city and said they're a sanctuary state, and then they're going to bus them out to the suburbs and force the suburbs to deal with it. Well, let's be clear, what they're doing is illegal, also what they're doing is, um, you know, it, they're treating people, migrants are hu, they're still human beings, and they're treating them like they're chattel, and that's wrong too. But here in Orland Park, we're going to, one, we're going to follow the federal immigration laws, two, we're going to make sure that our residents stay safe, and three, if someone puts these people here, we may not have control over it, we will make sure that they're treated humanely, and we'll make sure that the people of Orland Park will be kept safe, but we have no intention of taking anybody from Brandon Johnson or from Governor Pritzker or anybody else. And I think I speak for the board on that, but I'll let them speak for themselves if they so choose. Any other non-scheduled visitors here to speak? Board comments? Board comments. Trustee Reardon.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know the details of, uh, what one of the commenters was talking about, but I can say, living in Orland Park for almost 14 years, nobody in this town promotes, supports, brings up the positive, uh, programming and heritage and legacy of the veterans than the mayor does. Every event I've been at, when I was running as a candidate, when I've been, before I was running as a candidate, at being at the Taste of Orland, anywhere, he would make it a point to bring up support, to donate, to, uh, again, bring as much publicity as possible, change the golf outing to fully support their programs. So, again, I don't know the background of that, I'm not going to get into all of that, but, uh, I, I think that's a, to use a warm metaphor, not a hill that you would want to die on, arguing you, your, your support for that organization and doing the right thing by them with, again, statistics, facts, research, like you handle just about everything else, like it or not, you, you know, that's what, that's the way you handle those things, so, very surprising comments. Um, it's going to be really hot this week, watch out for your neighbors, your children, their sports, all their activities, it's going to be really, really hot. Uh, school starts for the grammar schools this week, so also be a little careful out there, they're going to be hot too. I know the police department is going to do a great job that, like they always do, in kind of getting everybody ready for the new driving patterns and the, you know, parents that are driving all over. I don't think we meet again until after Labor Day, on the 5th, so have a great Labor Day as well, thanks.
Trustee Healy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm the, uh, I'm the, uh... I would just like to say, and it, it's big special note, that this is Sister Jean's birthday, for the history records, okay?
105?
So, I'm going to try and refrain from not, you know, using some bad language or whatever, but the, uh, I'll, all my, only comedy is, uh, these pickleball courts, it seemed like a great idea, and I think that we should, uh, I look forward to the first city tournament. Um, from there, I may, uh, stay up at the men's league or, you know, instead of the kids' league, but, uh, I'm looking forward to that tournament. Thanks.
Trustee Radishevsky.
So, I too want to comment, um, just about the horrible accusation and saying that it's everybody here on the board, and I, I don't even know what you're accusing the rest of us of, it just seems a little crazy to me, um, and disappointing to, to hear that, uh, because it's not factual, and you know what? And I, I want to say that I come from a family of military, my father was a Vietnam veteran, God rest his soul, my son was in the military, my brother, I have cousins, I mean, I have so many people, I mean, we do nothing but support the veterans, 100%, so to say anything otherwise, it's just insane. It's just, it, it's insane, so I will thank you for your service, because you certainly deserve it, but I'm disappointed in the things that you're accusing.
It's board comments, it's not time to have an engagement, you had your opportunity to speak, thank you very much.
So, it's just, um, anyway, I'll move on from that point, and I also wanted to say about the heat, um, it's going to be in the upper 90s this week, 101 on Thursdays, so please do check on your neighbors, check on your, um, your, your loved ones, um, just be safe, and are we having the cooling station? That's, okay, good, so the police station will have the cooling station if you need. I had a couple of people, um, today actually saying that their AC went out, so it does happen, um, and it always happens at the worst possible times, so that that is a resource for you. So, that's it, thank you.
Trustee Gatsinas.
Trustee Radishevsky kind of stole my thunder here, but, um, we've taken a lot of arrows for a lot of things that we haven't done. We've heard a lot of robocalls that were sent with nonsense, with lies, with sexual innuendos, so, I mean, you know, it's hard when you're sitting up here and you try to do the right thing for the right reasons, for the community, and, and be lambasted, it's, it's really tough, and that's probably one of the reasons why we ran unopposed, quite honestly, nobody wants to subject themselves to this, and I think the comment was, you should be ashamed of sitting up here, and I wrote it down as it was spoken. Uh, I too just want to say, I've probably lo, known the mayor the longest, sitting here, and to accuse him of doing anything other than caring for the veterans, it, it's really unfair. You know, we, um, our Taste of Orland, which is our premier, uh, event, he made sure the veterans had a voice on the biggest night, Saturday night, right before the opening act. Um, I wasn't there, I don't know the dynamics, but it's just out of character, um, for the mayor, both character and his integrity, I would doubt that he would do that. Um, I hope that's not the case, you know, he did, I'm sure he didn't though, knowing how he has spoken and what he has done, and not just up here on the board floor, but in, in private, how he cares about the veterans, of which he is one, very, very deeply. So, was also going to talk about the Great Pumpkin Party, uh, which is kind of a segue, I guess, um, in addition to all the wonderful programs our rec is doing, really a neat event that they have every year in the fall, is the Great Pumpkin Party. Any of you have little ones or kids, it's such a wonderful event to go to. Um, residents get a discount on the tickets from now until April 25th, you can buy them at the Village Hall or the Sportsplex. It's a wonderful way to introduce the fall and really what this community is all about, the good. Thank you.
Trustee Malami.
I will defer my comments on the veterans for this evening, because you guys have covered a lot of it, but, uh, I'm going to focus on something brighter and happier and cheerful, uh, instead of a little negativity here. We're going to talk about special recreation and athletics, how's that sound? Because that's, that's always near and dear to my heart, because, uh, our special recreation and our athletics teams have been very hard at work for the past few weeks. Um, recently, 20 athletes competed at a bowling tournament, and they competed for the gold medal at the, uh, tournament on August 12th. They earned six gold medals, six silver and four bronze medals, and all of the gold medalists get to advance to the sectional tournament in Addison this October. Also, the, the Owls softball team, uh, was in a tournament in Joliet in August, uh, they competed and finished with a gold and a silver medal, and that gold medal team will go on to move to the state tournament in Springfield in September. And finally, the Owls golf team competed in July 25th, uh, we had three gold medalists and two silver medalists there, and those gold medalists will move on to the state games in Decatur in September, on September 9th and 10th. So, congratulations to all of those athletes that competed, and thank you all, once again, to all the staff and all the people that make those events happen. Also like to remind everyone, oh, wait, I'm going to talk about the veterans, the Veterans Golf Classic coming up on August 29th, and our annual Brew Fest on Saturday, September 16th. The spots are filling up very quickly for both, uh, so get them while they last. Thank you.
Trustee Compass.
So, this evening, I'd like to lead off by recognizing the Employee Leadership Core Strength Quarterly Award winners. Each quarter, the LEAD program has selected a core strength to focus on and cultivate within the Village staff. For Q2, the selected core strength was learner. Learners were defined as employees that have a great desire to learn and continuously improve, they are excited by the process of learning beyond outcomes alone, learners joyfully seek out new challenges to learn more as individuals, help themselves and their team stay on the cutting edge, improve processes, resolve problems, or set new productive courses. These individuals also effortlessly, effortlessly take on the role of natural teacher to help others learn. So, those recognized for demonstrating strength, the strength of learner were Christopher Geer, David Love, Scott Lukin, Nicole Merced, Sean McCraye, Miranda Nickel, Nick Putzleidig, David Rodriguez, Ann Sloick, Paul Sories, Brandy Watson, and Jerry Ann Flannery. And then lastly, as we've had a, a very productive year, uh, with a five-year strategic planning and are approaching our nearly, our yearly budgeting cycle, I'm really excited for what this next year has to bring for Orland Park. I'm just over halfway through my first term, and halfway points can sometimes make me a bit reflective on where we have been and where we are going. This is particularly true this evening as I was reviewing the latest proposals for Dugan Park. We've come a long way over the past six years, where renovations like this have become, dare I say, normalized, and resident feedback has been constructively and effectively incorporated into the planning refinements. Now, the main question is more often, how fast can we do it, not why can't we? I've been on this side of the table for just two years, but I've been a regular attendee of the Village Board meeting for six. What I saw six years ago to where we are today is different, not simply because of the vision and the ideas of those sitting here, and that's to be expected, however, this journey, this board, has transformed how we look at the future from what we once was a highly and almost solely reactive outlook. I'm going to cut quite a bit of my, what I had in comments here, because Mayor Pecall covered a lot of this in the Community of the Hole, so I'm going to cut about four paragraphs out of this, suffices to say that there's been, we've come a long way in terms of, of shifting to a strategic mindset. We're thrilled that now that, you know, not only are we proactive, instead of reactive, but we're actively shifting to a strategic, strategic mindset that adds structure for the vision setting in the future. After decades, we're seeing that the pioneers are now getting a well-deserved home at Schuster Park. So, Tenio West will also fill a vision as a community venue that was promised nearly half of my lifetime ago. And all of that doesn't include the neighborhood parks, playgrounds, pavilions, sport courts that we've installed just during my tenure alone, and again, those comments with the slide where is in the Community of the Hole meeting tonight. So, yes, I'm clearly a bit reflective two years into this role, but I'm as excited as I was when I first was elected. We are laying a strong foundation for unlocking even more of Orland Park's potential in a strategic and fiscally-minded manner. I'm proud to serve on a board where each member brings an outstanding, distinguished professional and personal background that complements the others. We rely on each other for our individual strengths and experience. It's been a privilege to work with all of you, not because of the shared vision alone, but because of our shared passion and drive expressed in a constructive manner. I say that knowing that I'll have some late nights and weekends ahead of me reviewing the next year's budget coming up. We all know the attention to detail that I pour into this. With that in mind, I also want to thank George, Jim, and all of our directors for pushing this shift to longer-term strategic planning through. I know it's required extra effort, it's required significant change, but not once have I ever heard anyone complain, not even Steve, who's had to deal with me directly on this. And seriously though, uh, throughout these individual department discussions, I could see the spark of creativity and optimism in each director's demeanor. There's a lot of great things to come, and I thank each of you and your departments for your perseverance in getting us to this point. I hope everyone has a great rest of the week.
Thank you for your comments. So, um, so a couple of things, one, um, I really want to thank staff for all the hard work they did on Dugan Park, um, again, all the things that we did over the, uh, that we talked about at the Committee of the Hole, all the things that this board has done to get that to happen is great. Um, and, and I also, you know, I heard the accusation to the whole board as well, like you did, and I can tell you, there's not a finer group of people here that are serving the community because it's the right thing to do, they're not interested in personal gains or political things, they are interested in the best things for the community, they've made hard decisions, they've taken a lot more than any other place ever has, um, that, that I'm aware of, um, that, that I've ever seen, the things that have, have come, all for serving the community, which is really uncalled, which is really uncalled for. It's a shame that someone came up here and spoke, and I, I can tell you that I was at that, uh, the Legion meeting when I spoke, and the one she's referring to, she, she repeated exactly what was in the robocall, nothing that was at the meeting. I do not recall her being at any Legion meetings that I have ever seen, that doesn't mean, because my memory's not perfect, but there's very few female Legion members, so they, they tend to stick out, and I don't remember. We can certainly look at the video to see if she was at the community thing that we held there at the next Legion meeting, and the people that were there that stayed for the Legion meeting, so we'll know if, uh, if she was there, but, um, she was not, she repeated exactly what was in the robocall that she yelled at us all about for doing, she, that's exactly what she repeated word for word, which was in that very nasty robocall. Let me be clear about veterans, aside from the fact that I am a lifetime member of the Legion, I'm a lifetime member of the VFW. I promised the Legion and the VFW in 2018, and I don't think any of them, even those that may disagree with this decision, would, would tell you differently, that I told them that this was likely coming, because it was pretty clear in 2018 that this building was beyond its useful life, and I told them, I said, listen, I said, you will always have a home as long as I am mayor, and George, did I keep that promise? Because that was not your recommendation, was it? So, I kept that promise, because I think it's important for the people and the residents of Orland Park. No other town, none, provide a place for the VFW and the Legion, they have their own places, only here do we do that. And as a member of both of those organizations, I am grateful that, that the people of Orland Park do that, and I think the overwhelming majority of the members are grateful, it's a shame that one, that one isn't that was here tonight, um, but the overwhelming majority are, and they still have a home, and they still have a place. Um, I will also point out that the mayor's golf outing was called Dugan Days, then it was the Owens Open, and then I forget what it was called under McLaughlin, but they, they had, the mayors historically have always said what the beneficiary of that charity outing is. When I became mayor, the first year I let it go, let, let it be what it was, because it was already in planning stages, the next year I changed it to benefit veterans groups. The Village Board, the Village Board, mostly to get back at me, were going to kill that program, and anyone can go back and listen to the audio about how we had to, I had to staff it with all volunteers, normally the staff helps for that one day, but for this one, they had to take time off, and they'd be volunteers because the board would not support our staff doing it. They were going to, they were going to eliminate it. The one power they cannot take away from the mayor is to put things on the agenda. So, I put on the agenda, Mayor Pecall's Bill, uh, Veterans Golf Outing is what I put on the agenda. I can tell you, that night, they railed against the fact that it had my name on it, and I said, take it off, I don't care, make it the, the Veterans Golf Outing. But they went from not wanting to pass it, because none of them's going to vote against the veterans, and I knew that, and it passed 7-0. I can tell you, in the next meeting, we were having a budget meeting, and under the guise of, um, basically because it was employee-related, they wanted to eliminate our veterans program that were here because it eliminated an employee, and I will tell... And I will tell you exactly what I said to them in that meeting. I said, "Do you want to go through the same thing we did last week? I'll put it on the board floor, and I'll explain why it's here. Or do you want to just keep the program in place?" By the way, the program in total cost us $7,000 a year. And they said, "Nah, never mind." And so they kept the program in place. But it was recommended by the previous Village manager to get rid of all of our veterans programs. So I have fought for the veterans programs, and to have anyone come up here and defame me and say something different is, quite frankly, it's disgusting. We have raised over $130,000 for veterans groups in the golf outing since we've made that. So there's been nobody that's been more supportive of them. I obviously am a veteran, and I encourage everyone to come to our Veterans Day event, our Memorial Day event, our Village, our Taste of Orland and the Veterans event we do for Taste of Orland. I speak at all of them, and make your own judgments. So sorry to get sidetracked on all that, but unfortunately, you know, it just has to be done. And that's a great segue into the fact that our Veterans Golf Outing's coming up next week, and there's still some openings. There's still some spots. There's always spots for sponsorships. Come out, and you can always just come to dinner as well and help raise money for the vets. We raise almost $25,000 to $30,000 every year for the veterans, so please come out and support our veterans, okay? And guess who will be there? The American Legion will be there, the VFW will be there. They'll be there supporting this golf tournament like they always are. So, and I want to thank them for all that they do. So lastly, I also want to thank staff for all the hard work for the concert, our last concert that we did. 2,575 attendees is what we had, so over 2,500. And I know it was a tough day, because we had the BMW Classic going on. We also had the Air and Water Show going on. It's a lot going on in Chicago. We still had very good turnout. It was a great time. I think people had a good time out there and enjoyed ourselves. So thank you for all that. Again, I want to thank staff for all the hard work they've done all summer long, because most of our summer events are kind of winding to a close. So thank you all for all the hard work you've done, and because I appreciate it. And again, you know, we heard the commentary, the job that this board has done and this staff has done, please go to the committee of the whole meeting and watch the stuff and watch this, a repeat of all the good things that we have done for this village, whether it's parks, whether it's roads, et cetera. So just, I really want to thank all of them, because they're all phenomenal board members, and you should be really proud that they're your trustees. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
We're to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes; B, pending litigation against affected around behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malami.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
Going to executive session.